Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public comment. Okay, there we'll move right along. If we have a chance to review the minutes. And a motion to approve.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve as written.
No second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. All of them are saying aye.
Aye.
We have a the EMS report for the month. It's amazing how great a job they do. We'll file and receive and file. Commissioner comments and committee reports, Eric.
First of all, I'd like to ask our condolences on to our city of the third class Lancaster, their mayor, longtime mayor, has passed away unexpectedly. He was a firefighter for forty seven years, on the rescue squad for forty one years, a storm spotter, and again, a longtime mayor. So our condolences go out to him and his family and the city of Lancaster. To Jim Callahan.
I might comment that we've been, we've been working hard to work on some interlocal agreements with our cities in regards to retailers, one percent sales tax in the past nineteen ninety three to divide the sales tax according to apportionment to pay for joint communications and solid waste. We'll be presenting that to the commission soon. My, I know there's a lot of discussion in the community about the sales tax and how it affects people. And the other day I was talking to us at the city commissioner who said, we could solve this in twenty minutes. And he agreed that what Commissioner Quinn had presented was probably a workable plan. He also agreed that the sales tax committee that worked in two thousand and eighteen came up thinking was a workable plan. So it just seems like we can't get past that twenty minute meeting to get anything done in that regard. So stay tuned because I think there's gonna be, the county has to take care of itself with regard of, if we're not gonna get the money, we've gotta adjust our services accordingly. So we'll keep everybody in the community warm, but we'll work hard to make it the right thing for all our citizens and not get hung up on this political situation about not paying the sales, not paying a share of the sales tax, that type of thing. We're gonna try our best to work with people to resolve this problem. That's all I have to do. Commissioner, could you add?
Yes, so this afternoon, myself and Kim Glover from Roden Bridge, as well as Jeff Shealy with Livwell and Heidi Grossman with Project Atchison are gonna take a tour out to Atchison County Lake to talk about possibilities of how we could do revitalization type strategic plan of what, what the future of that could look like. I know we've been in contact with Benedictine College representatives as well, and their biology department had interest possibly as well. So just starting those discussions with a tour and just kind of roundtable this afternoon, looking forward to that. And then last Friday, I was able to join Dr. Epley, Pat Henderson and Connie at the reviser's office in Topeka to discuss basically sales tax questions and ways that we can move forward with an interlocal agreement. I'm still hopeful, I'm the glass half full. I think that it's just, it's frustrating to me, some of the concerns that have been relayed as an Atchison County Commissioner who represents everyone in Atchison County within all of the cities. I know I have a certain district, but I feel like if you have a concern that I will represent you. And I do have a significant, significant portion of the city of Atchison as well. Some of the concerns as far as transparency and trust, I've strived, since I've been here for six months now, is to give any additional information that may be needed to try to, to build that trust that might have been lacking in the past. And again, I'm hopeful of that, but then I think that it's still there. After being pointed to listen to the city commission meeting last night, transparency was brought up again, and I just wanted to to have the conversation to let everyone know that from a county level, we are doing everything, we are answering every question, we're, it might not be specific answers such as utilities and meter reading and different things, but we are striving in everything we do, and I don't wanna be the only one speaking to this because we have a team that is striving, it's not me, but it's, it's all of us. We want to come up with an interlocal agreement, we wanna work together. I see huge opportunities of the future if we can get on the same page and, and can build those relationships and, and create a sense of trust that, that should be there. So.
Some of our departments, that's what make the comments.
I would just add that my office and the treasurer's office is always open. If anyone from our entity or city ever has any questions, they're more than welcome to come up and be happy to discuss anything. And I feel that's always the policy that I've had in my office is to have an open door and to answer questions and, and provide those, so. Hope to continue that and move forward.
I agree too. Provide anything that anybody wants to see. We're always open to send in documents and spreadsheets of, of anything that we have, if we're asked.
We're the same, as well as being part of the joint communications board. I think there's, that's the appropriate place and time to request those, those type of things. And we've had multiple meetings over the years of those requests. There's representation from multiple agencies on there that represent those entities that can ask questions or, and that's, that was the intent of creating the board, otherwise there's I'm sure there's recently have that board. Use that time to fulfill those requests.
So you know, I think the joint communications board is made up of six people. They vote and two people don't vote. Commissioner Quinn represents the county on the board. Commissioner Rebus is on that board. Police Chief Wilson is the president. Wes Lantner, our emergency management director, is the vice president. It's set on by Pat Weiser, the city fire chief, the rural fire chief, and our EMS director. And they go through those budgets and they, they determine what's best for our community and our citizens. And they do a tremendous job. Now, the rub is, in two thousand and fourteen, we passed a joint resolution that asked that we have a vote on the budget and that we have a joint interlocal agreement to pay for those things based upon the sales tax question of nineteen ninety three. That's where some, why that basic synopsis, a simple math, doesn't seem to be there. We got the money? We got more than we need, by the way, and this can be used for our citizens and our communities, and it should pay for the, the solid waste and joint communication. The problem is we're not being funnel enough money from municipalities. And it's a challenge. And I think Fisher Quinn said it best. She's willing, I'm willing, and I'm sure Mr. and all are willing to sit down and hammer through what we gotta do to do this, but it just seems like we can't get to that point. I really believe that everybody wants the right thing, but it, that's not what I'm hearing. So it's, it's, it's just as I add on to what Jack has to say.
I think Wes had something to say before his appointment.
Wes, you got something?
So yeah, there was the discussion about the city not knowing about the eight ninety seven fund. And they did know about the eight ninety seven fund because when I was explaining how all of the money got transferred, all the money is deposited from the sales tax from each of the cities and the state into the eight ninety seven fund. And then from there, it is split out and deposited into the, the respective budgets. So the, the statement of they didn't know about the eight ninety seven fund is not the correct statement because they knew about it.
We lost you, Wes.
Did you hear any of that?
Yeah, yeah, just only faded to the last minute there, so.
Okay, so, so the statement that they didn't know of the eight ninety seven fund is not a correct statement because all along, every time I would explain that to the city manager, I said that the money was deposited from the municipalities and from the state into that fund, and then from there distributed to the two budgets.
Yes, I believe it was also touched on when we talked on the sales tax committee because we were talking about the, the big savings or that was looming there and why it hadn't been utilized because it was non-budgeted funds and contention of the city was that the county couldn't use it for anything, that's solid waste and joint communication. So that was part of the rub. And, and it was discussed in the sales tax committee. And I wanna point out too that these boards, both solid waste and joint communication board, have passed every budget, correct? I mean, has there even been major divides on or it's usually unanimous? Is that true what the joint communications board do?
I think this year is the first time it wasn't, and that was because I I understand.
Okay, so as, as the information from these boards that we glean is that they feel like they are, I haven't heard for more prizes for more representation or, or anything. They are perfectly fine with the expenditures at that level, and they are the ones that are dealing with it as a committee over and over.
So I would just like to speak as a new commissioner and kind of summarize some of the things that I've heard and how I understand it, and please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but so from the county's perspective, there's the apportionment formula that's set by the state. So for instance, and I have the, we've done, we've done examples in the past based on twenty twenty budget just because it was a finished year, but I think it's easier to explain, like twenty twenty one budget right now is joint communications was one million ninety thousand two twenty three nineteen. Solid waste budget is eight hundred and fifty nine thousand four seventy two. So the sales tax was to fund those two budgets. And based on the apportionment formula, which is created by population and mill levy, which the city of Atchison's of, as of January of twenty twenty one, is point four eight three eight eight six, Effingham point oh two two seven four six. I can keep going, but then the county is point four seven five one two eight. So basically, how we view it is you take those two budgets, pay the apportionment rate, and that is the, so to speak, fair share in the, in the county's eyes, okay, moving forward. And I'm talking about twenty twenty two and forward because there's a history that we all are aware of that's ugly, ample amounts of money, all these fund balances, different things, which when we look at the history of that, there has been a fund balance. But you look at it where the county's apportionment rate was exceeded, the city's apportionment rate was reduced, and there is more money based on the one percent sales tax than what's needed to fund these two departments. However, we proposed that everyone pays their apportionment rate and keeps their additional rate to utilize how they're doing it. And I think in the past, and when I say past, previous administrations from the city of Atchison found the loophole to where they created a resolution that said, okay, this amount of money is what is fair, and they've contributed the four hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. Well, they look at it as I, I, I haven't figured out how they came up with that. But basically, when you look at, we need to fund these two things, but we have this great amount of cash over here. You know, it doesn't make sense. But when you look back at the history from two thousand and fourteen, the cash was created by the county and city of Lancaster parts. And in my opinion, it should have been dispersed each year into those funds so that there's not this. But from the history of all this turmoil, it's almost like everyone was scared, like scared to do anything because there, you know, it's, it's a, I have eyes on you because I don't trust you, and I don't think you're doing your job correctly, you know, and all of these things. So then it just, it created that plethora of cash. And so that's why I feel like it's important to get an interlocal working relationship and an interlocal agreement and moving forward, have those specific procedures that Ms. Berger talked about last night and, and protocols to say, okay, we're starting here with zero. We're collecting the sales tax to pay for these two funds, and then we want reconciliation each, you know, and I know that the department heads, Kim and Stacy have started sending the monthly reports that they ask for because you copy us on those. So there's room to work here. I just think sometimes listening to the story on one side or the other is a bit skewed from maybe our perspective or theirs. So just figuring that out, figuring that out together is, is what we need to be doing.
Ms. Berger mentioned something in this city meeting last night that really caught my attention, and that is saying that they didn't know that about the, the fund is eight, eight seventy?
Eight ninety seven.
Eight ninety seven, I'm sorry. I'm bad about fund numbers. And then saying, well, that was created because of their contribution. Well, their contribution never did end up being as much as what the, their portion of the budgets were. So how that could create a surplus when it was the less than the total amount owed really caught my attention. Another thing that was brought, has been brought up is the fact how surprised when we had our city county meeting and, and Casey's presentation on about what we would like to see was a surprise. But it shouldn't have been no surprise because that is essentially the same draft or proposal that was brought to fruition through the sales tax committee. And it was Sean Riz's, at the time, mayor of Atchison's proposal to do that using the apportionment formula. And that was the draft of August of, August twenty seventh of twenty nineteen, which I have a copy of here. The city, once they took Sean's recommendations and they've had the first stab at drawing up a interlocal agreement. That was, this is the, their first stab at it. Of course, then it was everything that we had proposed only with a control wing where they would take control over both programs. So that's where the stumbling block came was then under the control portion. But as far as them at that time seemed to be in agreement with paying both joint communications and solid waste as recently as August of twenty nineteen.
Well, and so another thing that I forgot to mention is historically, when the city found their loophole to reduce their apportionment rate that they give toward these two, Effingham, Huron, and Muskota followed suit. And so what we proposed is to clear the air, create an interlocal agreement moving forward where everyone would do what's right. And that is what we're going to propose. We're working on that. Basically, what, at our interlocal meeting, what I spoke of, putting that in our, in our local agreement form and then having the cities all sign off on it, which just verbal feedback has been positive, I feel like, from the cities of the third class wanting to move forward, like wanting to do that. And I think from the city commission side also. But I just think having those relationships and having that trust factor will be so much easier to work together because it's hard to work together when there's, you don't trust someone. And I feel like I don't know how we build that trust with the city of Atchison. But I definitely think obviously there's a trust issue when the clerk is coming to our meetings, you know, to take notes and different things, which I love that because I love, I need someone to listen to me personally. Like, I don't like an email or a text, like talking face to face, eye to eye comes off so much better, in my opinion, than the emails, you know, like, so, I don't know. Again, I, I have.
I just think, I, I make one more comment. As a country, we've become a very political, there's a lot of political discourse. People yelling names at social media, people love media, you know, I'm liberal, I'm conservative. This public discourse on the national level, you know, for a local level. My grandkids go to school with Casey's children, right? I, I go to church with so many people, and this was, we socialize together. This is a small rural Kansas community. It just seems like we don't need public discourse to try to get something done. And I think we need really, again, taking a attempt to sit down and discussing this through. And I don't know what the, the format of that is, but everybody's gotta check their eagles at the door. And I think, because public discourse doesn't belong in what's politics, in my opinion. And I don't think of myself as a politician. I think of myself as a public servant. I wanna serve the people, this, this community. And when I say community, I'm talking about every city, every rural area in the county of Atchison. And that's all I think that I want, and I believe the other commissioners feel the same way, so.
I do. And speaking from a small town, my kids are in school, and I, I view my position here as I'm doing it because I care and I can separate professional from personal because things that the city manager may say or do may, on a professional level, I might have an opinion, but as a mom and a friend and a someone I see on the street, you know, it's a completely different. So I think that's in a small town. Also, you have to separate that as far as, you know, professional versus, versus personal, so. And I don't know if you would allow, I, I don't wanna put him on the spot either, but maybe shedding some light that we're missing or.
Are you asking Justin?
I mean.
Is that what you're asking?
I don't wanna put you on the spot, but are we missing something? Like, we really truly wanna work together. And it's just, it's tough from our perspective to get emails saying we're violating things or like we're doing certain things incorrectly. It almost feels like we're being micromanaged. And it's like, we, all we wanna do is do what's right, provide the information, work together and, and build that trust.
So that's a long string of comments to then be asked to respond in a
Right, and.
Type way, but to try and touch on the larger point, I would say that being sales tax and funding. Conversation about road bridge funding. We don't care if it's not called a district two because, you know, they all, some years it's here, some years it's there. Things kind of mold around, but there are three of you, all three of your districts pay property taxes that contribute to road bridge, and two of you get projects inside those districts. So I have said, we're in, we're a complicated organization with five commissioners and different administrators and different department heads and things like that. So, you know, that's gonna take this as a saying that I'm speaking on behalf of the city of Atchison as a whole. You, you built a logic model for sales tax funding that's based on sort of equity of distribution. I think we would agree to that if the same logic was applied to road and bridge funding. So that is one potential path to reconciliation of this issue is, that's fine, but when there's such inequity in another domain, that's hard to to agree to. Because as I said, and I've done the math on that, and I've shared a, a paper that, that came out of our organization, a white paper several months ago, that it's committed, it's every, it's three quarters of a million dollars a year that properties inside the city of Atchison contribute to property taxes to the county that goes into the road and bridge department. And we don't, we don't see any of that benefit. So that's one comment that comes to mind is that there are a lot of different perspectives and ways logically to construct fairness and equity and distribution of things. The model that you put together might be agreeable. But I think that the city as an organization, we wanna see that applied to the road and bridge funding as well. We're also not ignorant to understanding that you're experiencing road and bridge funding issues for the same, like we are. So that's, that's a tough, that's gonna be a tough hill to, to climb and and come to the agreement on it because everybody always feels like they've got enough resources to perform the simple services the citizens are asking for. We, we experience that same thing. So I don't wanna go through and answer. I don't see every email that's sent to what, something that came from Julie, that came, that was sent to Connie or from Becky to you. You know, I, I don't necessarily see all of that. I think that there are three or four different ways to to attack that issue. There are three or four different ways that there could be an agreement. But in a negotiation typically, in order to receive something that you want, you have to give up something that the other party wants to see as well. And in what has been presented so far, perspective, I think I would be, from the city on this perspective would be that's a lot, if you give, you give up X because that's what we want to see, and that's what's right. What, what are, what, what's the, that's not a negotiation, that's just a request. And the I don't know why, is this not a better situation for the city, which is the taxpayers that are a commissioner representative? So I, I'll just a couple of thoughts again. I'm, I'm not here to broker a deal on behalf of the city today. Public meeting, but those are a couple of things at a, at a fairly high level that I would be going, that I could say today.
And I, I completely hear everything you're saying, and I actually agree on, I know we've had the conversation on the road and bridge and, and funding is an issue, and that is a priority. And I think above that, the priority for me as a commissioner is the two point eight million dollars that we already have, finding a way to work together to keep that and not allow a senate bill or a petition come to harm that money that we already have and like, how do we work together? And one of the things that I learned from the reviser's office that was intriguing to me, so I believe this could be future discussion possibly, is this, the ballot question. If we put a new question on the ballot, we can do in addition to, that way if it weren't to, if, if it didn't pass, we wouldn't lose it, we wouldn't lose the money. But the, in addition to, could be roads and and, and bridges to where it's a plethora of money and that overage would be dedicated for those resources. So if everyone paid their apportionment, we'd still have that addition that you could use in those manners.
Aren't we maxed out though on the amount that we can raise under?
No, it would, it would keep within that one percent.
Oh, it would just, for, it would just expand where you could use.
Yes, sir. Yep. Which I thought was pretty interesting. And then it's hard, I guess, for me and can, representing the constituents and, and listening and looking at the numbers, it's hard to negotiate, so to speak. And so I understand negotiation as far as give and take, and, but it's hard to understand how we would give other than. It's hard to understand how we would give other than upping our transparency that that is a give, I guess. And and monthly reports and different things when. Historically, it looks like it was. From a funding perspective. Taken and a- a- and again, I I look forward to future discussions with.
One uh one additional uh point that since this conversation about uh eight ninety seven of that point. Uh there may have been some general understanding that there is a place in the books where money comes in and it's transferred to other funds. But there was uh wouldn't have been fathomed that there would have been the amount of money that's there, that's there. So when. It's a little bit of a needless point to say that, you know, the city knew that that fund existed. At the, from City of Solid Waste Committee, but it's not like when, say, it's the financial reports of the Solid Waste Committee. There's not a a line at the top that says eight ninety seven has this balance in it. And I don't know about joint communications, but I don't go to this, but I don't imagine on those uh. On those financial reports that are good with those committees, it doesn't say at the top, hey, where the, where the, where the juice first comes in, uh. It's accruing and here's what we've got, that, and back on that, so. Was there awareness that there is a parking spot in the financial, in the, in the accounting system of the county that, that? That's where it is, sure, we give the same things, this is where money gets dumped in from the state, sure, but uh. If we were to ask, like, is there a balance there? That's, that's the, the rub, it's the, the volume of the balance, not the existence of the bar.
Just, Jessica, I asked you a question. What do you think of joint communication, solid waste in this county? You think they're well run, you think you've got the right route for our citizens?
Yeah, I think the the services are well run, I I think it's from a. To take a little step back and say from the theoretical perspective, are these services that uh that uh should be funded via sales tax? Sales tax is such a highly variable fund, solid waste is a textbook example of a fee for service. And it's a, it's a utility, uh almost quasi utility, and to fund that with sales tax, especially when the. Uh proceeds of that sales tax have become so uh so different than when those originally passed. But I don't think any, any of the uh fatigue or conversation from the cities that has to do uh has to do with. Criticizing how those uh, how those services are. They're quite well funded, yeah, they're, it's not a, a whole way of service delivery.
Let's see this from my point of view, we know they're valuable. They're real valuable and they're cheap. Our, our joint key, our solid waste is thirty five dollars a ton is cheap. And uh I will tell you that when you, when the city of Atchison's only contributing. In the low twenties to both pro, twenty percents to both programs, in the case that you don't think it's important. I understand where where I've come from, it doesn't sound like you think it's important not to fund them.
Yeah, so that would just be a difference in perspective, I mean, also, I guess you'd say like, whose, whose services are they? Which, which organization, whose services are they? And we would say the answer is the county, right? And so if they're county-run services, uh there aren't a lot of examples of cities that fund county-run services. Uh would be the, uh that might be difficult to hear, but that's, that's the different perspective of. Well, I understand that in the, the sort of counties aren't able to levy dedicated sales taxes. Without the state legislature saying this is a dedicated tax, right? And what they go, if, if.
Now, but they, they, they were in the past it has, I mean, we've got one, I mean, that was not. Plus.
That's why it goes through the apportionment formula, is because the state legislature did not say this is a dedicated tax, so that's why it goes through the apportionment. That's why it goes through.
The quarter so tax will use for the ball fields, sports, fun bucks, it's a dedicated tax approval. So that, that, that's, that's a fact, Justin, and uh I know you're really knowledgeable, that's, that's important. But I think, I think, how do you sit down and have a conversation? I'm not talking about if you do this, we'll do this, but I think you need to talk about this package in and of itself. And then it's easier to work on things like. Interlocal agreements could be very powerful for our community. And maybe beyond the solid waste and joint communication. So I, I think all of us are open to having that, especially Justin. But the, I think the, the, the thing is, we've got to solve this problem to prove we can work together. I mean, it's a, it's a challenge.
I appreciate you coming in, I'm sorry, I shouldn't put you on the spot because, but I, just having those conversations kind of like. Again, looking face to face, not through an email, not through a, a poker zoom, like, it's like, okay, let's do this, like, let's figure it out. So.
The, the last kind of point that that comes to mind now and says that uh there was no problem until there was. Sales tax uh receipts are exceeded. What was necessary for those two, uh prior to that, everything was fine because kind of a. Hey, everybody understands, everybody has to contribute to this because otherwise they don't have money to fund these two services, uh and then things changed um. When, when there was.
More sales tax. It's, it's going to get larger.
And it will.
Yeah, so.
So I, I would agree with you that it, it ought to be addressed so that that's not uh. An ongoing problem because that, that gap is going to continue to widen and uh. There are three or four different iterations of how it, I think it could potentially be mitigated um. And and negotiated. But it's not, I, it's not just as simple as, well, in nineteen ninety seven. You wrote us a check for everything that you got. That's what we want. And the answer, I mean, the answer to that is, is going to be no. Because. Again, from the city's perspective, their county services, and we want to make sure that they're fully funded. We never um not made sure that they were fully funded, uh which is, I think is an important point here that. Neither of the two services has ever been short a budget request that they've asked for that I'm aware of. So it's, again, the rub is with the excess. And there are things uh we'd like to be able to use, that there are ways for us to, like, right now, the fund, the funding is used for uh paying for us all the waste recycling. Service. We would like to be able to use those sales tax proceeds on the same type of things, I mentioned you. Which is uh infrastructure.
So you're not keeping your excess sales tax in a fund, you're spending it, right? See, in the, in the case of this eight ninety seven fund, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but remember, that's like a hundred thousand a year. Over. Yeah, so it, it's just because it's accumulated that makes it large, it's not a gigantic number at the end of the day, I mean.
No, sure, but I mean, governments, there's a, there's ways to calculate where ideal fund balances and utility ones, they should be a little bit higher. In general, funds where the, the revenues are more stable, they should be a little bit lower and.
I think there was a hesitancy to spend that money on the county because we were always trying to go for. The uh interlocal agreement, so we were trying to remove obstacles. That would clear the way for an understanding. So there's, over the years, things have been, we've tried to get rid of. Things that the city thought were objectionable, and one of them was. Don't spend any of that money on anything but joint communications and solid waste, so the overages accumulated. Because a hundred percent of our portion. Was given to those uh was put into that fund but wasn't budgeted. So that's the reason that such a large, over fourteen, like, seven years uh that that accumulated. Seven or eight years, yeah, it's fourteen.
I just have one more question while we're chatting about it, do you know how? Because I always try to put myself in the other person's shoes to understand, like, even if we wouldn't agree to just have an understanding. Of how that four hundred. And forty four thousand dollars, like, so it's on a resolution? Okay, but how that number came about?
Yeah, so there's a. That was the best um. Looked with at the time, uh in a fairly simple math. There's the joint communications budget, the solid waste budget, there's uh. The amount of sales tax funding that the county gets, uh we have the portion of formula. A little bit of math, what are those two budgets, what does the county have, their receipts, what's the gap? And that number, we believe, two thousand fourteen.
So the intention was always to have us pay a greater share.
Yeah, I, I think I would date back to the county uh services, so. The, I, I, I think the difference here, in your perspective as well, um there's these excess funds, let's all kind of split it according to the apportionment formula. What's it cost to do solid waste and joint communications, what does the county get in terms of sales tax receipts, what's the gap between those two numbers? Uh and, or, that's how that was done in, in twenty fourteen, it's how I understand it.
Interesting. And, yeah, and so from our perspective and looking at the apportionment formulas. And based on that KSA statute of being able to utilize them in the general fund after the services are paid for. It just. Prevents the county from taking care of additional needs or general fund when we're. Picking up the slack, the slack, so to speak, from the other entities, just so you have our understanding, like. And again, it's, it's a difference of perspective, but we all have a job to do and and to represent everyone and. And when the state sets the formula and there's numbers to. Put next to it, being a numbers person, it's just, it's hard not to. I guess abide by that or understand. How that was viewed, I guess.
Yeah, the, the other uh point that I might make, the, the. The apportionment formula dictates how revenue is distributed, it does not dictate how. Expenditures. Works one direction and it seems like your, your logic model fits that on the backside of it as well. Which is not, certainly not mandatory uh via the state law.
Right.
Now, I, I understand the logic model, um but who, you know, there's, there's a, not to circle back to where I started this, but. Your, the shackles on your uh wrists, so to speak, with uh with this are released if we uh come to a, a agreement, right? Uh and then you're kind of free to, to do whatever you want with it, well. There's also some state law that governs how road and bridge funding works and counties can't unilaterally go with the cities and do more. But the answer is in our local.
Their policies will keep, can we do it for sure?
Sure.
So it's covered by, yes.
It's funny how that uh.
But it's.
Yeah.
Fairly recent that the city has changed their stance on that because. The draft of August of twenty nineteen does use the apportionment figure. And it was proposed by the then mayor and and under Becky Berger knew all about it because we met. I met with her three, three times, I believe, in her office and was very agreeable to that.
I think I'm prepared to answer that as well, the, the distinction there would be in the, in the, I mean, in the case here of, of one point, uh several months ago. The, the distinction is the quote balance of the county, right? If you do all of that math and divvy it up, there are a number of residents around the county that don't live in an incorporated city. And so the county's perspective then is that, well, the county should receive those funds. Representing those, those folks and sort of their apportionment of that, but balance of county is not a political subdivision that exists. And I think the city's perspective view would be that. They aren't any more county residents than people inside the city of Atchison are. And so why would the county get to receive the rebate, so to speak? Or quote balance of county, but it's not a political subdivision that even, that even exists.
What I'm saying is that. You knew the same thing in twenty nineteen and it was laid out as.
So I think the difference there is that you're assuming balance of county comes back to the county, uh comes back to the county. And in that uh arrangement, uh I don't believe that assumption.
So, and let me, so that makes sense to me, so when you're looking at the apportionment formula. And just real quick, I had heard that, you know, a portion amount on the backend doesn't make sense, so I checked with. A handful of other county commissioners and they are utilizing that formula in their counties and getting along fine, but they have. That trust and that working relationship, so I think what you're trying to say is, so for the city of Atchison, I'm just using the population. Um based on Kansas Department of Revenue website of twenty twenty, city of Atchison, ten thousand four seventy six. The apportionment rate being forty eight percent, forty eight point three. Balance of county, population four thousand five fifty two, and the apportionment rate forty seven point five, you're saying. The, the people in the balance of county.
I, I have read the paper that Eric's looking at.
Okay.
I, I do recall uh that the folks in the room of the sales tax committee uh seem to have a deal with, and to me. As I understood it, it broke down when uh when there was some insistence on wanting to. Control or uh. You call it control, you could call it. Don't sound as dubious as control.
Oversight.
Oversight, yeah, um. And that, that's where that conversation broke down, I'm happy to look, look through that and try and figure it out, but uh. Perhaps my, perhaps my assumption that the, the balance of county uh situation that we talked about previously. Although that might have been the issue that uh just. The assumptions were different, uh for the different parties uh in that room, but I suppose I had to look at it a little bit further.
But if that money is used for, say, our, i- if we would be able to utilize that and that. Then we have a different tax mix, it lowers the taxes for everybody in the county, if we don't have to raise taxes for additional projects. It also makes a difference for everybody in the county, because when we have to raise. You know, that, we're not raising it more for the people on the outside. Of the city of Atchison or inside, it's all, it goes to our middle, so when that middle levy is set, if we have. Funds, you know, uh that's where balance of the county, it still helps out the, the people, the citizens of that, of the city, because that lowers the tax.
I wasn't suggesting that, right? Citizens of the county, that people, the city, all them uh related is that they don't have a political subdivision. Such as a city that, that represents them, that could receive some kind of rebate. Through the formula that Casey had suggested.
Okay. We've talked about this for a while, this discussion's been going for twenty one years, right, that I, that I have worn. Maybe I've been involved with about at least more than half of it. We need to move on to business, I think this is a great discussion and and Justin, thanks for.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And uh it, it's great to have a spin on things, it makes a little sense. Okay, so I'm going to move on to do business, let's, Kate, Bishop, finish it, anything else?
No.
Okay. Um, okay, Abby Purdue and Jennifer Maxwell, United Way Leadership Breakfast Update.
So I am here, Abby is not here, I said that I would take care of this today, so. I assume that um Michelle forwarded you guys the information that I emailed in ahead of the meeting, is that correct?
Just a minute. I haven't seen anything, did you get anything on that? Michelle, did you email us anything from, from uh Jennifer Maxwell? We have not gotten that.
Okay, that um. I was asked to email that in ahead of time and that it would be forwarded to the commissioners so that you guys could look at that, but that's okay. I think it's pretty simple, I talked with Jamie Madison and I pulled the last time we had a leadership breakfast, the, the actual bill. And it was three thousand three sixty five, I kind of had said at the last meeting that I presented to you guys, it was about thirty four hundred dollars. Last time in twenty nineteen, you guys split that with the city, that. Your part was one thousand six eighty two fifty and it was signed off and paid on May seventh of twenty nineteen by the commit, by you guys. Um, we're just asking to see if you guys want to do the same thing again, I have contacted and had great discussions with. Um, we're just asking to see if you guys want to do the same thing again. I have contacted and had great discussions with two local. Um, restaurants here in town because the event center does things differently now and they do not offer. A food service. Things are a little bit different, but pulled some numbers, talked to some people. Um, we're still looking at about two hundred, if not just a little bit more. So the event center is going to be able to accommodate that. And with pricing the two hundred people, it would be about three thousand to thirty two hundred dollars. So a little bit less. Than what it was in nineteen, but if there's more people attending. It could be a little bit higher. I just cannot give you guys an exact firm number. Um, no different than we haven't been able to give you a firm number in the past. So. I am here with all my numbers and everything to answer any questions you guys might have or to gain approval to see if you guys want to. Um, do half with the city as you guys have in the past. And I, as I stated in my email, the city has already agreed to pay half the cost.
Is it? Last week, Tom, you talked about hundred and fifty people, Jennifer.
I did not have the numbers in front of me as I stated, um, Jack, and so I pulled the numbers. Terry, um, our previous director is the one that handled that. So I'll be perfectly open and honest with you. That was my best guess at the time. After pulling the numbers from the actual bid and the actual bill, it was two hundred.
So my calculation is right. It's the seventeen dollars a meal. Included the. Uh, table claws.
And there, there, if you want the exact breakdown of, um, so actual food will be either eleven dollars a person. To fifteen dollars a person, depending on if we need servers, which the event center doesn't offer that anymore as part of the deal. So we will need one or two servers. Um, and so that's where the up to thirty two hundred could come in. There is a cost for like the, um, table claws, napkins and stuff. I have given you that bill. It's not going to be what that is. Um, the theater Atchison oversees the event center and it's going to be a dollar per person. Is what they're going to charge.
It'll be twenty dollars a person. It'll be about twenty dollars a person.
Um, at the most probably if you wanted a, a, a high.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve. The, uh. Underwriting the, uh. Leadership breakfast for twenty dollars a person up to a hundred people. Not to exceed a hundred people. For our half. For our half.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Sorry, Jennifer, can you just re, um, restate the, the point of this breakfast again? I'm sorry, I know you came before, but in conversations as far as a hub for all Atchison County nonprofits and United Way kind of being that. Um, vehicle and just what this breakfast actually. The mission and, and what the breakfast accomplishes.
Absolutely. I'd be glad to do that. So, um, this breakfast actually started prior to me being on the board, but it is my understanding. That this leadership breakfast came about due to the fact that there was multiple five oh one C three organizations. Going and requesting money before the city commission as well as Atchison County. And as also my understanding, it kind of came about with Trey Cocking, Jeff Shealy, and I think Ellen Rivas had a hand in it as well. That maybe that wasn't the best use of taxpayer funds to be doling out these type of grants, what have you to the. To these agencies and therefore Trey and Jeff got together. They came up with this leadership breakfast idea. To try to be a means where the city and county could come together, help the United Way raise the funds for these organizations. They would put kind of half and half the bill for the cost of the event. Therefore, all the money would go to the United Way. And through our due diligence program that we have through our applications, then it would go back to these agencies. Um, through our program and processes. Is that understanding to you?
Okay. And so you're asking our portion to be, I'm sorry, what was the total eighteen hundred?
Well, I mean, if it was, if I'm kind of estimating, uh, it would be about thirty two hundred dollars. I don't know if that's going to be a fact. We have really made some changes within the organization and we feel that. We could probably almost get more than two hundred people there, but we also are respectful of you guys and your budget. And if you want to put a limitation on it, um, that is completely fine, a cap. Of what Jack just said, you know, a hundred people in there. If there's just two hundred and twenty people there, then. Um, we'll see what the city wants to do. They did not put a cap on theirs, but then the United Way, I guess, would just absorb anything that would be over that. Um, this also, your part of it would also entitle you all to attend with table, a table or tables. We've never restricted the city or county how many people they wanted to attend and. It has been attended very well by the city and county in the past. And we do have a guest speaker. Who is going to be Elizabeth Collins from Amberwell.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is. Up to two thousand dollars, twenty dollars a person, not to exceed two thousand dollars. Why the seven? I'm hesitant because we discussed appropriations this morning and it's similar. Thing, I, I think I'd want more of a conversation about where we're going with appropriations and this kind of fits into that same. Same thing.
So I would just make, um, a comment stating, thank you for. Explaining the mission and to be one more collaborative effort of Atchison County and City of Atchison coming together to support our nonprofits. Um, because from the constituents I've talked to, I agree, I'm looking to, um. Lessen the appropriations, um, that are given out and I definitely believe in all the nonprofit organizations and I think that we. Need to come together, um, and support them with this breakfast. So.
Do I have a second? Okay, Bushadash for lack of a second. Oh, when do you need to know this by? I mean, if we would reconsider, huh? Just, well, I know, but I mean.
So can one of us make a motion to approve her request?
Yeah, I just made a motion.
Well, you made a motion to put a cap on it.
Well, I want to make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the breakfast for the United Way dinner. Or sorry, United Way breakfast in collaboration, um, to split it with the city of Atchison to encompass support for all Atchison County nonprofits.
I have, I have a point. They don't, this, that way doesn't support all the Atchison County nonprofits.
Um, we have currently nineteen agencies and all nonprofits are welcome to apply each and every year. And as long as they meet the requirements, I don't recall since I've been on the board that we have. Um, denied too many as long as they followed the rules. Now there have been some that did not meet. The requirements and therefore they may be left out a year, but they're always welcome to apply.
Can I email you a, a list of our appropriations that come before us just to make sure that. You have a list of at least inviting them to this?
Absolutely. Every, everybody in the community is welcome to come. This isn't just closed. To the people, the agencies that, that we represent. This is the county as a whole, along with the city.
So motion fails for lack of a second. Yeah, Jennifer, thanks for appearing.
Okay, I, thank you so much.
Kimberly Baller, Rich, Texas weed, uh, manager.
Um, so I just had the two purchase orders from this morning, the one for the metal culverts for the tube border and then the one for the, um. Bridge abutment for Norfolk contracting.
Let's, let's do the, uh. Culverts first. The chair will entertain a motion for metal culvert sink, uh, for culverts for twenty one thousand nine hundred and thirty eight dollars and sixty cents. Of a motion.
So.
Second by Christiane, all in favor, second by, obviously, I.
Hi.
Passes three zero. Okay, then we have some more. Instruction. A north bridge abutment sheet, sheet pile installation for bridge. Eighteen point zero dash seventeen on Lincoln Road for forty one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Have a motion to approve. A little bit Christiane, all in favor, second by, saying aye. Passes. Okay, Shelley, yes, and thanks for today.
Yes, I came up for approval this morning for the computers through Dell, which is through our IT department. For Poor Richard's as well. And then I had the national business furniture and we discussed trying to find it local. I did go down and talk to, I believe it was Scott at, um, Atchison Furniture Company. He said him, him and this street mercantile would not be able to order the furniture I wanted. I checked with Tanya at Poor Richard's. I was finally able to find the link for the office furniture and it is not what I was looking for. I wanted to get chairs that had arms so that if somebody needed assistance to push themselves up off the chair, that they would have it. Um, so I also called Exchange Bank. They had went through Rosemary Neese or Nice. And, um, they gave me her number and I talked to her and she is retired and not doing it at all. So she was not able to help me either.
Okay, so this purchase order. Says it's a lifetime warranty. For a couch, for sofas.
Lifetime guarantee.
Lifetime of what?
I guess as long as we own the furniture.
And there's five, a quarter sixty one dollars in freight to get the furniture to Atchison, right?
That's correct.
So the chair will entertain a motion for purchase order for national business furniture. For the amount of twenty nine hundred and seventy six dollars and ninety eight cents. A little bit, Commissioner Quinn.
Okay, so just to reiterate, these are not county funds, correct? This is state money that you. Leave and we just have authority to tell you, go ahead, spend that state money so we don't give it back.
That's correct.
Okay.
If it's for something we need, I'm not just frivolously spending money.
Seconded for discussion purposes. So further discussion. I don't know, just. That freight just. Sticks my curl.
I don't mean to be rude, but I mean, I've ordered from them before. You know, we've purchased from them before. So. And I, I do understand wanting to purchase local, but I also need what I need and I have to be able to find it. And if you have another suggestion for here in town, I, I would.
You're in a hurry because you've got to expend this funds immediately, right?
Well.
If we've given people, the community a chance, we might have been able to get this furniture delivered without the.
Well, she checked with all the local furniture places and they said they can't help her.
That's today.
Well, so who?
Ari or, or Scott would not be, he did not have what I needed. I want. Metal frame furniture. I don't want like a sofa you're going to put in a house and I want the furniture to be. Have not cloth fabric on it, but vinyl leather, something easy to wipe down. You know, we have people that come in, sometimes they're dirty from working and we need something easy to clean up.
I mean, are we seriously nitpicking the furniture choices? Yes. Like, I, I don't understand. It's state money. It's not county funds. She's done her research and she knows what she needs for her facility. Wha- what's the hesitation?
I, I did also send you guys an email and I included the. Magazine from Poor Richard's so that you could see what, um, what they had. And I included the national business furniture one, so you could see what I was looking at and what we have on the purchase order or on the quote.
Yeah, true. Okay, so I'm going to call for a vote of this in further discussion. All in favor, second by, saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Passes three zero, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, various office supplies from Poor Richard's. That goes to all the different. Uh, issues, all the individual items, but the biggest items are, uh, a shredder. And a file cabinet. The shredder for five hundred eighty six dollars, our cabinet for hundred forty eight dollars.
Tanya did get back to me because she does reduce the price and the power shredder is actually four eighteen and the four drawer filing cabinet is three ninety one.
So these aren't accurate numbers?
They were the price that was in the catalog and, um, I sent her a spreadsheet and she puts the actual price in it. And the total came to fifteen thirty seven oh nine with the actual price.
Okay, so how much is this purchase order worth?
It, one thousand five hundred and thirty seven dollars and nine cents.
One thousand five hundred and seventy four dollars. Thirty seven.
Thousand five thirty seven oh nine.
Okay. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve, uh, this for Poor Richard's for fifteen hundred fifty seven dollars and nine cents. Also moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, second by, saying aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a purchase order here for. Eight, one computer from Dell. Purchase order, I thought you said this one, three purchase order, Shelley.
Well. I need three computers. Each computer is fourteen sixty four. So the whole total for Dell will be four thousand three hundred and ninety two dollars and seventy eight cents.
Please repeat.
Four thousand three hundred and ninety two dollars and seventy eight cents. That's a fourteen. Sixty four.
So the chair would entertain about, entertain a motion to approve a purchase of Dell computers. The three optic five oh nine L SFF computers, forty three hundred ninety seven dollars and seventy eight cents.
So what? Three ninety two seventy eight.
Four, three, nine, two, seven. So. Do I have a second? Yes, second. All in favor, second by, saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three zero.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Shelley.
Have a good one.
You too.
Okay. All unfinished business before the board. I don't know. Uh, county council. I need to. Talk to you in session about attorney client. I guess it would be the next thing I need. As in. Even if I do. Thirty minutes. Are we ready for that? I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at two ten PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body. Which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship as allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion and that the board come out of executive session at. Two forty PM in the commission room, first floor of the courthouse and those present will be the three commissioners and Pat Henderson. Is there any more? And Pat Henderson, county council.
Thank you for coming.
Do I have a second? Thank you.
I get.
Move the second, all in favor, second by, saying aye. Passes three zero, already. Any public comment?
I just have one more thing. The ASAF board, were you guys going to say something about that?
I don't know if it's, did we decide to?
I just.
Actually.
I'm not, I don't want to give up my, my position on the board, but I'm willing to let you work through this process.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we were.
Last week, did we mention that we need a, an executive session on senior village? We talked about it last week. And I. Didn't, I mean, I, I don't really know the full topic or what was, but we talked about. Common overview and maybe we're not ready or. I just don't want to forget anything because it's another week.
Right. Um, do you? So end of the month, next week, let's put it on the, let's maybe do it then.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I, I just remember us discussing that and, and didn't want to miss it if we, if we needed one.
There's no additional public comment. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn at two forty one. See you next week.